And broadcast. And just waiting for folks to populate the room.
Very good. Looks like we've got, let's see. Well, I think we, I see the, I see the applicant on our only application this evening. So why don't we go ahead and get started? Andy, can you hear me? Okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newburyport zoning board of appeals hearing for the, the hearing of August 24th, 2021. It's seven o'clock PM and that's our appointed published time for opening this meeting. So I'm going to start by just going through the process of our roll call and then get right into our public hearings. We have one continuance and then one matter going forward. And so it should be a fairly short hearing. So without further ado, I'll just take a moment to see if anyone else is going to pop on. And if not, I'm going to go ahead and just jump right in. So welcome again, everyone. So we are going to begin by me calling the role again. This is Rob Champetti, the chair of the zoning board of appeals. I'll begin by introducing our board and just calling the role to establish a quorum and then quickly just going over an overview of exactly how our board works. I'll give the abridged version this evening since we only have one application, which is 30 Winter Street. So we won't, we won't belabor the process. So starting with our roll call, I will, just give me a moment. I am going to call our role and just establish our quorum. In addition to the members of the ZBA in attendance this evening, we also have Mr. Andy Port, our city planning director, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Ms. Gretchen Joy, who's our keeper of the, of the record. And so when you do speak, if you speak, whether presenting or, you know, as a member of the public, please just give your full name and address so that this joy can, can keep proper minutes. So with that, I will begin by calling the role and members of the ZBA, please just respond by saying either here or present. Mark Moore.
Here.
Steven Delisle. Did I hear, here?
Here.
Thank you, Stephen. Sorry about that. Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Bud Shannon. Actually, Mr. Shannon is, I believe, absent this evening. So Mr. Gregory Bennett.
Here.
And Mr. Bennett will be our voting member this evening. So just for the record, the, the five voting members of the ZBA this evening will be Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Stephen Delisle, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Gregory Bennett, and myself, Rob Champetti. So we have five voting members. We have a quorum so we can proceed with opening the public hearing. Just to keep this brief for those, I, I think those in attendance are certainly familiar with ZBA, but if not, we'll go through the process of my reading, the, the, the public notice, the description of the property, the application and the relief being sought. We'll then open it up to the floor for the applicant to present. The applicant will then present or the applicant's representatives, and then we'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll then go to questions from the public. These are, this is the public comment section. And Andy Port will put up a slide just describing the public comment rules of the road. We ask that everyone keeps their comments in two minutes, if possible, out of courtesy to every other member of the attendees that might wish to speak and just out of courtesy of time. I will govern that and certainly try to give some discretion when I can. After we close the public comment section, we'll then go to questions from the board and I'll go through the role of every member of the ZBA voting this evening. And questions they may have, they'll ask questions, we'll try to answer questions. More questions may come up, and at the end of that, we'll close the question and the questions from the board section. Then we go to deliberations. In deliberations, we deliberate the legal criteria necessary to, that an applicant must meet in order to be successful in their application for zoning relief, whether it's a special permit, a special permit for non-conformities, a zoning variance, or, or a blend of all of those. We will deliberate out loud so that everyone can hear us and sort of observe us thinking out loud. At the end of our deliberations, we will then close that portion of the public hearing and I will call for a motion to approve from a member of the CBA. When I call for motion to approve, it's just following our, our modified version of Robert's Rules of Order. We just do that as a, as a matter of convenience and as a matter of procedure. So we ask for a motion to approve. And that motion to approve will be, will be made by some member of the ZBA. That does not mean that that member plans to or, or intends to support the application. It's just procedurally how the matter is put onto the floor for a vote. The motion is made to approve by a member, then it must be seconded. Once it's made and seconded, I'll then call the role and we have to have at least four members of the ZBA voting in the affirmative for that application to be successful. So the motion only carries if four members vote yes. And in this case, that's four out of five. So with, I'll further ado, we'll jump right into the public hearings. The first matter is a matter that we've received a continuance on Brendan Johnson and Kristalene Creel Johnson, 65 Curzon Mill Road. It's a dimensional variance and we've received a request from the applicant to continue this matter. This matter was itself already continued from the hearing of July 13th, 2021. Andy, I, I may have missed this, but was there a date that they've requested or just next event?
September 28th.
All right. So the motion by the applicant is to, to continue their application to September 28th. Do we have a motion from the board?
So move, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Do we have a second?
This is Stephen Delisle. I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
I'm going to be recused from the matter, so I don't know if I should vote on this or not, but.
Okay, so I will move to Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Mr. Chan, and Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's four in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and the matter is continued to the hearing of September, was it 22nd? I apologize.
20.
Thank you. So that matter is, that matter is now continued. We will now move to the, the only matter this evening on our public hearing that remains, which is the application of Eric Primack, 30 Winter Street. This is docket 2021-49, special permit for non-conformities to remove an existing rear shed roofline and extend and upward the second floor walls and roof to create a, to create greater headroom. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Primack?
Good evening. How are we all doing tonight?
Thank you. We're doing great. Thanks very much.
Thank you for having such a small agenda tonight. So my intentions on this house to, to restore a house which has obviously fallen to disrepair over the years to bring rooms into use for more modern families in regards to headroom, especially just in the back of the house. Where'd you go? So the existing structure, we've got a single family home. It consists of a two-story front section with a gambrel roof and a two-story rear section with a shed roof, which had been added sometime after its original construction. The proposed plan would be to remove the existing rear shed roofline and extend upward the second floor walls and roof to create usable space with greater headroom on this, in the second floor rear. The existing structure as it is, does not conform to current zoning in either front or side setbacks. The front is four feet four and the sides are two foot eight and one foot nine respectively. So as you can see, the the house is in a very tight footprint. The upward extension of the second floor would not further intensify any non-conformities. I don't exchange, I don't plan to change the footprint one bit. The existing footprint and all the setbacks would remain as existing. As you can see, there's the plot plan on that, on that slide. So you can see the only space really that exists is in the back of the house. Everything else is, is quite tight to the, to both the neighbors on the left and the right. There is the assessor's card, just with the basic information. And the zoning determination, which is requiring me to apply as a special permit for non-conformity. This is the existing front elevation, which we've got what are they, 12 over 12 windows in the, in the first floor and 12 over eight in the second floor. And I intend to keep that structure as is. We're going to be replacing the windows with energy efficient simulated divided light. And replacing all the siding as existing with, we're either going to repair or replace it, but keep it, keep it as, as existing and as well as the front door. So from a street view, there's going to be no change at all of this house, except that now it's going to look decent. So next slide is the proposed front elevation, which as you can see is the exact same. We'll have architectural asphalt roof shingles, the seat of siding. And as you can see, proposed removal and replacement of 12 over 12 SDL windows and the 12 over eight SDL windows on the second floor. So third floor is demolition, which is in the front, which is, is, is none. We don't have to take anything out, just using existing window openings. Next slide is the rear, which is, you can see, it's got a section in the back that was off of the original house. That's, you know, two thirds of, of the existing house wide. It's got a sloped roof and it does have a chimney that's in the middle. So we intend to keep the two chimneys that are in the main part of the house. And that chimney that is in the rear section of the house will be, will be demolished as we create the upward extension and create more space, more headroom in that second floor. The next slide is the proposed rear elevation. So as you can see from the dimensions given, we're extending the, the fascia up six foot five. But from the existing, the existing roofline, I think we're only going from the top to where the gable is, I think we're only going up about three feet. Not, not even, not quite three feet. We don't have that. Not sure why we don't have that dimension in there, but you can see at least from where the existing fascia is and where the, where the new line will be. So that roof will be a little bit of a, a flatter roof. It will still have some pitch. And we're adding a, going to be adding a window in the middle of the second floor and adding another French door in the, in the bottom. For, so this is where the chimney is going to come out. We'll have it so that we can let some, some more light into the back. It's quite dark in the, in the rear of the house, as you'll see from, from some of the pictures. So the next slide shows the demo required for the rear elevation. So this is the existing right side elevation. As you can see, the same, same view on that back section, which was, which was added sometime later. And then the proposed. So as you can see, the back chimney is now gone. The fascia moves up the six and a half feet. Is the, you can see where the new construction is. And we've added a window on that side as well. So the, so the existing window gets, gets moved up and we add one window at the bottom. And the, the demo on the next slide should show you what that consists of. You can go to the left side elevation, which actually has two windows on the rear. So the only thing we're doing is, again, we're taking that chimney out and we'll be moving that top floor window in the back up accordingly with the rise in the six foot five inch extension upwards from the, from the existing fascia. But all existing doors and windows on that side will still stay. The existing siding will stay and be repaired and replaced. We've got kind of a mix there. There's some two inch and there's some three inch, but again, we're going to replace it as it is. And there's the demolition that only exists for the left side. It's very minimal. And then the next several slides are pictures. So as you can see, this thing was in pretty bad state of disrepair. But there's the, there's the back section, a little, little bit close up view. I think the next slide is, so there's kind of the rear view from the corner. So that's like the corner of not the corner of Washington, but about Washington Street by where the rail trail is. So you can see that existing shed structure in the back and we're going to raise that up a few feet, but still keep that gable end. That's a shot from the rail trail. You can see is the front right side. Shots to the front left. Again, rear right side looking over from Washington Street, showing that shed. And from the corner of Washington and Winter, looking up Winter Street. Same view, just a little closer up. I think there's one that's from the view from across Route 1. And that's about it.
Okay. Was there anything further you wanted to add before we closed that?
So again, I'm not, I'm not changing any of the side setbacks. I'm not doing anything just existing non-conforming, going straight up. And I hope, I hope for the opportunity to turn this back into something that the town could be proud of on that strip. Which is a very, very, very visible point in Newburyport.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Primack. I appreciate the presentation. We will now close that portion of the public hearing and go to our public comment section, though I expect this to be fairly short. I only see a few attendees. So the public comment section, I just ask everyone to kindly govern yourselves accordingly regarding our instructions on public comment. And with that, I see that we have one hand up. It's Mr. Tom Colter John. Mr. Colter John, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. We can hear you loud and clear, Tom.
Thank you. Tom Colter John, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. This is a wonderful historic house and I'm hopeful to see this brought back and again become a wonderful repaired structure. However, I'm a little confused why Mr. Primack is here this evening presenting rather than asking for a continuance. Unless I'm mistaken, he, he went before the historic commission and they imposed demolition delay in order to work with him further to make this a better project. So my understanding was that he was going to come back to the historic commission and work with them and, you know, make it a better project. But yet he's here tonight. I guess asking for your approval of his project. So I guess that I would suggest and ask respectfully that, that you continue this until he has had a full opportunity to work this out with the historic commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colter John. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application, whether in support of or in opposition to, or just merely in connection with? You don't have to be for or against. You may just simply raise your hand and speak. Anyone else seeing no other hands? I will end up. Mr. Colter John, I see your hand still up. I just want to make sure you didn't have something further to add before I closed. I see. Okay, I see Mr. Colter John's hand is still up, but Tom, if you wish to be heard further, just leave your hand up and I'll recognize you again. If not, I see your hands down. I will close this portion of the public hearing. Thank you. And we will go to questions from the board. And why don't we begin with Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I do share some of Mr. Colter John's questions as, as to why would we be here to approve plans that are are most likely not finalized. There were a lot of things to, to be worked on from what I heard with the historic commission, but be that as it may, and that we have a little time tonight, I'll, I'll just throw a couple of questions. And one is the second floor windows were a concern. It looks like they don't have to change. So that's, you have confirmed that there doesn't need to be more space for egress for those windows, which was brought up at the historic commission?
That's correct.
Okay. They also mentioned about conditions report and in looking at the structure, I mean, I think we all look for it. You've said it and, and, and I share your sentiment there that it, it's a beautiful old structure that, that really needs to be rehabbed. There appears to be some serious gaps in the side of the building where it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily automatically lend itself to just replacing damaged clad boards. There could be structural damage because of, of water getting in for an amount of time. So I wondered if you'd already done a conditions report. I know that was brought up at the meeting as well.
Well, we haven't done a conditions report, but I have been over there with my general contractor. And, and for the most part, it's pretty solid. It's got very good bones to it. And there is some, as you can see, there is some rot in that back corner.
Yep.
Structurally, it's actually A-OK. There's going to be, you know, obviously some, some pieces that need to be replaced that, that, that will be more surface. But it's, it's structurally sound, believe it or not.
So from just that, that view, you are confident that the plans that you have right now would need to be changed dramatically?
Correct. We, we, I've been, I've been over, over that house with a, with a fairly fine tooth comb with my, with my general contractor. And we're, we're confident in, in what needs to be done and what we can do.
Okay.
As far as bringing this meeting versus with the historical, I mean, I've done that before. I don't see any reason why you can't have them in concert. What I'm asking you for is the, is to allow me the upward extension based on the non-conformities, the existing non-conformities. If there are any changes that I come to with historical, certainly that's going to go as, as part of the, as part of the construction plan. But we did, we did find out and as I told them all along, if I could have kept those front windows, I would have. I was told originally by my architect, actually, that I couldn't, that I needed them for egress. But the building inspector did confirm that an antique house has a I got a loophole that I can, that I can, that I can use them and keep them. So I'll keep the 12 O rate and saves me from cutting any window openings, which is fine with me.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I mean, the front of the house, it's just such a, you know, stately looking building. So.
Absolutely. And again, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm asking for too, too much. You know, I know the historical wants to take a look at the house and I have no problem having them. You know, we're trying to set up a site visit if we can, maybe in the next day or so. We have a meeting again on Thursday. So, you know, the only thing I think that there, excuse my voice, the only thing they think that they wanted to see was just how, how small in space that second floor rear is and how much it, you know, really needs to be extended upwards. Which I think, I think once they see it, they'll, they'll find that it is. Because it's really, as it is now, it's like non-levable space.
Right. And to get to your point on the, whether it made sense to go forward with this, I mean, we, we decide on, you know, size, scale, massing. If something comes up, you know, with a major change in plans, it more likely would come before us, but to okay something that might change dramatically depending on what is found out in, in a couple of days is something that might bring pause to something. I will find out. One more question is on the chimneys. You've used the term twice in the historical and commission meeting and tonight that you intend to keep the two chimneys?
We will keep, we will keep the two chimneys.
I just wanted, we will. Language means everything. So just make sure.
No, I understand.
Okay. That's all I have. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It would also be my preference this evening for the applicant to request a continuance on this matter to go before the historical commission and finish his work there before coming and asking us to, to either approve or otherwise with respect to the plans, because the plans may, as Mr. Moore alluded to, the plans may change. And this, you know, we should be approving the plans as they are going to be and not something subject to, to possible change relative to the, the, the list of items that the historic, historical commission has regarding this, this building. So that would be my preference. But as we do have some time, as Mr. Moore indicated, I'll ask a couple of questions also. Mr. Primack, what, what sort of windows are you planning on replacing them with in particular? I know you said some simulated divided light, but like, what, you know, what type or what, what quality level are you planning on?
Well, they'd be energy efficient. They would be vinyl clad. And, you know, they might be Anderson or they might be Marvin or the like. You know, anything that we've, I've used before, just true, true simulated divided light windows.
Are those the ones with the, the, the dividers on the outside of the glass or the ones that are, the dividers are squished in between the glass?
They are in between the glass. That's what simulate, that's what true simulated divided light are. Not the, not, not the cheap ones that are outside the glass that you can take off.
Let me see. Okay. And relative to the relative to the, the addition on, or excuse me, not the addition, but the upward extension. How, how high a ceiling do you end up in the living, with in the living space of the area where the proposed upward extension will be located?
Well, we've got, so you, you've got the, there's, there's two things. You have the first floor in the back has probably has a six foot five ceiling. So it's very low as well. The back of the house is right now the, the back section of the kitchen. And the upstairs has about, I'm not even quite sure if it's six feet high. It's kind of a, that shed was done later and from the, and from the original house, it's actually a step down into the back section shed. So we hope to at least get, you know, on both floors, they'll, they'll be more like, oh, anywhere from seven, five to eight feet. So they'll be, they'll be normal in that way from the, from the existing second floor. The existing, which when I say existing, that was the, 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 the first incarnation of the house before that shed was put on, you'll be able to walk straight out and have, and it'll be the, it'll be all one level. It'll be the same level with, 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 with a slight, you know, with a slight pitch down, obviously, from the, from the roof pitch.
Yeah. And what's your intention with respect to the, the original doorway and the decorative woodworking around the front door?
Keeping it all, keeping it all, restoring it all, restoring or replacing. If it's rotten, we take it out and replace it. If it's okay, we scrape it and paint it.
Well, do you, do you know what you'd be replacing versus what you'd be restoring? We had a, we ended up, our last meeting was an issue related to something like that. So I, I don't know if that's something that you need to be more specific about with us now?
Well, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't own the house yet. So getting, getting in and digging and seeing what's, what's rot versus what, but I don't. You know, I, I guess I would ask, what is, you know, you know, not to be rude, but what does it matter? You know, as far as ZBA is concerned, if it's, you know, if, if we get to a piece, you know, a rotten door, we replace the door with the original wood. You know, with a nice wood door that's, that looks the same. You know, we're, we're, we're bringing it back to its original state. That's, that's, that's my full intentions. But I would think that's more of a, I would think that's more a question for historical than, than zoning.
Well, I think if your plan says you're going to, you're going to retain something and then you replace it, you run the risk of having the zoning administrator stop your project. And then you have to come before us for some sort of modification of your plan. I think that's what happened. That would cause you delay. So I think the idea is that, you know, you come to us and you, you, you. So I think the idea is that, you know, you come to us and you 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 have all your ducks in a row.
Well, that one, again, I don't think that has anything to do with zoning, to be honest. I mean, zoning is all about setbacks and height restrictions, et cetera. I I think that's more historical. But again, you know, this is probably the fifth or sixth historic home that I've done in town. And, you know, I think I think my work, I think my work speaks for itself. We, you know, I restore and replace where where we're needed and, you know, comes out looking great. At the end of the day, that's what everybody wants.
Well, I can certainly appreciate that, but I think this has sort of been a circular conversation. It's gotten me back to my original concern of a plan that's not really the plan. So that's sort of, those are my thoughts here, that I don't think we're ready to to vote on this until you're done with historical. So that's my perspective, and I don't have any further questions.
Well, again, like I said, I've done, I've done this in concert before. You know, the issue is you guys only meet so often, they only meet so often. You wait for, you know, I wait for them, I go back to you, you know, then I'm two months down the road. You know, I'm I'm looking for the zoning aspect of this. Am I allowed to extend those dimensions, those nonconformities upward? That's that's essentially what I what I'm seeking from the zoning board. From historical, they want to know, am I using original copper? They want to know what I'm doing for the windows. I get that. From you, all I'm looking for is, based on this scale, you know, is this allowable? You know, at best, the only thing that's gonna that that would change is the scale might come down a little bit. It's certainly not ever going to be a bigger plan with historical. So that's all, that's just my my point of view.
Okay, well, that that's great. Thank you for that. But I do think that this zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority. And that's, we have to have the plan in order to approve the plan. We have to grant the permit based on the plan. I I think that's the case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no more questions.
Can it be, can you guys? Approve it on subject to historicals, say, for example.
If I, if I may, as as Chair, Mr. Primack, I think what what you may be hearing, and you know, certainly respectfully, is that while it is a cart, you know, cart before the horse, horse before the cart scenario, you know, a chicken and egg, you know, dilemma. We, as a zoning board, typically, because we are, and I believe as Mr. Delisle correctly pointed out, because we are the permit granting authority for this, for the relief to to, you know, for this upward extension, in order to approve it, we can't just approve it in the blind or improve it on, you know, on spec or on faith as much as we would like to. Because if something were to change, there's an efficiency paradigm, you know, of our work and all of our collective effort, yours included. If something changes before historical, it's only going to necessitate that we revisit this and redo it all over again. So it's it's never a, it's never an expression of trust or distrust to to try to try to persuade client, not clients, try to persuade applicants to consider, you know, allowing the the refinement piece to be settled so that we, as a board, have that in it as an advisory guidance, so that we know that what we're approving is is one and done. You know, if we are inclined to approve it. It only works in in favor of an applicant to to have the benefit of of all of those variables being settled. Because, you know, here you are, as as an example, toiling with the unknown, because you're not the, you're not the the historical commission. So so you are at a bit of a disadvantage, because we ask questions that we're going to ask, and you are, you you are disadvantaged in that you don't yet have those answers in terms of what, you know, what fine refinements, if any, might the Historic Commission, you know, ask you to consider doing, or maybe even strongly urge you to consider doing. You know, we we take that as advisory information. But I will say, as I'm sure you're aware, since you've done so many historic, you know, restorations and done them well, to your credit, that, you know, we take that, you know, we we take that with a great deal of credibility. You know, we're, we don't, we don't consider it a, you know, a, you know, a you know, a demand by the Historic Commission. But we, you know, we look at it on case by case, and we often, you know, are are allow ourselves to be guided by their, you know, their their expertise. So so in that regard, I think what you're hearing is that the board that we have this evening, you know, is is inclined to want to hear how this is going to look before they before they grant it. And if that's the case, you know, when I circle back, you may be asked to consider, you know, may be asked to have to decide whether you want to proceed with a vote or whether you may want to, you know, revisit the the strategy of of sequence. But we're not there yet. I just wanted to take a moment to kind of give you the lay of the land for what it's worth. And certainly, I don't want to give you any advice either way, but just tell you what I'm hearing as the chair and help guide the proceedings. So so with that, I'm going to finish through the questions, and then we will get into deliberations, and we'll certainly revisit with you so that, you know, we may have questions for you as we go. Is that, is that, is that fair?
Yeah, no, I totally understand. And I don't, you know, I don't mind a continuation of it. I guess, as you say, you know, chicken before the egg, whatever. But I guess my point is, you know, if I go forward with historical and and get their approval, and then I come back and you guys tell me, oh, no, the size and the scope of this is too big, then I have to go back again. So I guess it would be, you know, be helpful to at least know, you know, how the board feels about this from a, from a, from a perspective of what I'm I'm showing as a as a as a size and scope thing. You know, I don't, I don't mind, I have no problem noodling out the details with historical.
I I think that is more than reasonable to ask, you know, from from your standpoint as an applicant. And and certainly, I, as just one voting member, setting aside, you know, chair or not, I just feel that that is something that, you know, I certainly would want to try to share with you my sentiment on the overall project. I suspect my colleagues are like minded with me, but I'll let them speak for themselves as we go along. And then we'll give you that, you know, that parting sort of straw sense of, you know, how we feel overall, so that you, you know, you're entitled to know. You know, you're entitled to know what, where our heads are at, so that you don't just sort of spin your wheels going back to historic and then coming back to us, and then being surprised with, well, wait a minute, we don't like the overall size and scale, et cetera. But let's, let's just finish the process now, if we could. I wanted to just take that quick pause and and lay out a bit of the, you know, the detail so that you understood kind of how things seem to be evolving as they evolve. So with that, I think we left off with Mr. Delisle's questions. So I think that brings us to Mr. Channen's question.
Mr. Swanton.
Mr. Swanton, pardon, pardon me, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, thank you. I want to come back to this slide 19 that's up, but before I do, Mr. Delisle brought up the question of the front windows. And I was glad to see that you've stayed with the 12 over eights on the top. But I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said, you know, they're not going to be the, we're not going to replace them with the cheap little ones with like the stick on grills, if you will, on the outside. We're going to have the ones with the grills between the glass. And my my understanding of a really simulated divided light window is that it's like, you know, Anderson and Marvin, the companies you mentioned, sell them. They they actually have grills on the inside and outside of the glass, not just in between. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Which are you talking about that you're doing on the front of this house, which is the place that everybody sees?
From my understanding, simulated divided light windows are the ones with the grills in between the glass.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's, that's to me is the, I agree, it's a step up from the ones with the stick on grills on the outside. But it's, it's a long way from the ones that I think of a simulated divided light. But nevertheless, let's go back to slide 19. I just want to make sure I understood that. So slide 19, and if you could put slide 19 back up. You know, you asked us about the zoning issue here, and you know, I don't have a lot of questions, quite frankly, because Mr. Moore and Mr. Delisle kind of addressed most of my questions. But as I look at this house, you're proposing to take that back shed line, and you you want us to talk about the zoning issues. You want us to take it up to almost a flat roof there. And we have to think about whether that is more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there. And there's not a lot of flat roof houses in the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a significant change. And you mentioned that the reason you're doing it is because you want to go up to seven and a half to eight foot ceilings on the second floor. And I don't know, I mean, I live in one of these houses in the, you know, in the historic area. And not many of my friends, I certainly don't have eight foot ceilings or seven and a half foot ceilings on the second floor. So I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. The reason to push the roof up to almost a flat roof is you're looking for seven and a half foot to eight foot. Did I get that correctly?
If if we can get that out of it, yes. I mean, this house has, in the front section, has 10 foot ceilings in the rooms. It's a, it's a, it's a grand old house. And but it has the that shed section in the back is is virtually unusual, unusable. It's a step down, they're, they're, they're using it for, I I'm not even sure if they're usable for kids' rooms. It's not on the same, it's not on the same level as the rest of the house. It was, you know, whenever, whenever it was added, it was, it was poorly done. And if you look at the photos from the rear of the house, you're looking at a, you're looking at a rubber membrane roof that slants down, far more unattractive than one that's going to have now, that's not going to be seen as much, because it's going to be a lot higher. You're going to, you're going to see the architectural shingles on that whole, on that whole back end of that roof done over. And that rubber roof is going to be up higher, so it's not going to be as visible as it is now.
Okay, I hear you.
Now you look at, now you look, you walk by, you see that rubber roof. When we have it, when we have it up and pitched, it's it's not flat. It is, I understand, it's a, it's certainly a lower pitch than it is now, but you're not going to see that. You're, all you're going to see is the architectural shingles. So to review with that house.
You mentioned the 10 foot ceiling heights in in the older front part of the house. Was that on both the first and second floor or just the first floor?
First floor's got 10 foot ceilings, the second floor has probably got eight, probably got eight plus.
So you're trying to basically maintain that eight as you go to the back?
We're, we're, we're trying to, but it won't, because we we have to pitch it down. You know, we do, we do have to pitch it down some.
I guess I really don't have any other questions.
And it's not, and it's not as, and it's not as high. If you look at the second floor, it's not as high as as that back section.
I I mean, I have some concerns, but I I agree with my colleagues who have already spoken. I think if the historic commission already has you in process, they're going to see you again later this week. I just think it's a little premature for us to be deciding something when they're still working with you, what the plan is. So we want to see what the plan actually winds up before we have to decide whether we're comfortable. So I yield my time, I have no more questions.
Okay. Then we will move along to to Mr. Channen. If, but do you have questions for the applicant?
He's absent.
Yeah, he's absent.
Oh, pardon me, that's right. Mr. Bennet, do you have questions for the applicant?
Just one question. When was the shed added to this house, if you know?
I don't, to be honest, but when when you're inside there, you can tell that the framing is different. And the framing in the, you see the framing in the basement. And if I were to guess, I'd say, you know, within the last 40 or 50 years, might, you know, could be longer than that, could be 70. I mean, you know, this house is, you know, probably close to, if not more than 200 years old already. So it's, it's, that shed is, that shed is old, but not as old as the original house.
The shed was added sometime in the earlier mid 20th century, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. I have no other questions, and I don't want to reiterate what my colleagues have said, and particularly what the chairman has said. But I I'm a fan of this project. However, you know, I disagree with you, Mr. Primack, that the zoning board of review is limited to pulling out a yardstick and measuring whether or not your project complies with certain measurements and size limitations. Our our authority is much broader than that. And it, despite your good works in the community, it distresses me that you would make such an observation. So I, and I agree with my colleagues that although we're certainly not bound by the Historic Commission, I, for one, take their comments with and and evaluate those comments in the context of my responsibilities here. So I, for one, am not prepared to vote on this, despite my my feelings about this at this point. It is important for me, at least to hear what the Historic Commission says about your revised plans. And I will be honest, I I see that, in my view, although I'm an untutored historian, the historic significance here to this structure is in the, is in the front of the structure, the doors, the windows, the pillars surrounding the doors and the chimneys, all of which you appear to have addressed. And I suspect the Historic Commission may find those satisfactory as they review this. But I agree with my colleagues, I'm not prepared to vote on this at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. At this point, let me, let me press pause for a moment and pose a question to Mr. Primack. Mr. Primack, just sort of hearing the, you know, hearing the 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 data on the walls and the conversation on the walls, I'm sure you've observed that we have five voting members of the ZBA, two of whom have expressed a reticence, if not an obstinance, to wanting to vote, or at least vote favorably on this application in advance of historic's advisory input, which would leave you with, assuming all other members would vote favorably, that's still only three members. So mathematically, you're in a bit of a quandary. So I, I, in that you need at least four members to vote in the affirmative to, you know, to carry. Now, I'm happy to go through the 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 mechanics of going through deliberations and then a motion, a second, and a vote. But at this point, I usually extend the courtesy, which is within our discretion, to you as an applicant to to let us know whether you wish to take a step back, take a pause, or whether you would like us to continue to press on, which I'm happy to do. But I just wouldn't want this to, you know, to blindside you. If if the vote is is unfavorable, just to be in full disclosure, you would be barred for two years to bringing the same application before the ZBA without a substantive change to to its massing size, scale, you know, and overall mechanics. So so I never want that to blindside any applicant. I think my share, I think my colleagues share that sentiment with me. So with all of that in mind, is, do you do you wish us to press on? Or do you wish us to entertain a a pause of this or a continuance to a meeting after the Historic Commission gives you their advisory?
Yeah, I'd like to request a continuance until I get to with historic. And by no means was I trying to say that, you know, extinguish anybody's authority or 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 put down anybody's authority to look at any project from a, from a small developer, small builder point of view. I'd like, just 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 as an observation, you know, I've gone through this a few times, whereas I've had to deal with ZBA and historical at the same time. And it always, it always seems to end up in the same way. One, you know, one comes, one wants to see what the other one wants to do. One wants to see what, you know, the the ZBA wants to see what historical wants to do and vice versa. And I would love to see as, as, you know, no, you know, no detriment to to either authority. But I would love that if there was, you know, may maybe something that that worked more together with with applicants as far as a a review process, whether it's, you know, just for historical or ZBA, or when you're having to deal with the both, that, you know, it would be very helpful from a developer's standpoint. Like, I understand, I'm sure everybody in this room or everybody online here would love to see this house fixed up and looking good again. Right? And I get that. And everybody has their questions and concerns as to what it's going to be. Because as far as them, them, you know, you wanting it to be done, you want it to be done right. And I, and I totally agree with that. But I would love to see some kind of, you know, whether it's an advisory board, whether it's a review board, whether it's something that you could submit earlier prior to meetings, because you do, you know, you put a lot of stock in these meetings. And when you have them only once a month or once every three or four weeks, it it definitely puts a project behind. And again, when it, when it's somebody like me who's only doing And again, when it, when it's somebody like me who's only doing one or two projects a year, it's a big deal. So that's just, you know, just, just my two cents on it, but yeah, I don't mind having a continuance, going forward with historical and then coming back to see you guys at the next meeting.
Okay, and, and Mr. Primack, I, you know, I just as one voting member, I, I fully empathize and appreciate your sentiment and where you're coming from. You know, in this instance, and though it may just be sort of a lawyer's response or a technical response, the reality is, you know, this board is the, is the permit granting authority, so we rely on the advice, but merely advice, though we often take it to heart for sure, for all the obvious reasons of historic. But I, I've also, I can also tell you that this board, you know, is not inclined to simply wait in an endless loop for that to happen, because we also understand our duty and our charge and our, and honestly, our responsibility to, you know, to ourselves as members of the public and you in the form of an applicant as a, you know, as a peer in the public who comes before us with an expectation that we, we do our job and try to render a decision. And, and so our effort is merely the aspiration of trying to render the best decision with as many of the tools as we have. And, and though we, you know, in some communities, they meet once a month or, you know, once every three weeks, we in fact meet twice a month, which is every two weeks. As, you know, it's sort of in that spirit. So that may still fall short of, you know, timelines, but we, we, we do try our best and I, I respect everything you said, and I hope that when you come back, we'll have the benefit of everything. You know, as they say, all the news fit to print, but with your request, I will put it to our board, we'll take a vote and see if we can get you continued and, and we'll look forward to seeing you back very, very soon. So is, is there, when is the historic commission meeting next on your application?
I believe it's this coming Thursday.
Okay. So why don't we, you know, why don't we endeavor to put you on our first September meeting, which is the 14th? Andy, we have, it looks like we have room on that.
Yeah.
Caitlin.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, so if I might, you know, just sort of in, insert in the, the, the proposal that it's, you know, September 14th will be the very next hearing that we could have you come back, assuming my, my colleagues agree with that, I will put it out to the, to the board for a motion to approve a continuance to September 14th.
So move Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Greg Bennet, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Bennet on the, Mr. Bennet on the motion to, on the applicant's request and motion to continue the application to September 14th, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Swanton, yes.
Swanton and Mr. Chen, I keep, I'm so sorry, I keep forgetting who's absent. Mr. Swanton is a yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it. The motion carries and the matter is continued to September 14th. Mr. Primack, thank you for your, for your patience and your presentation and, and for your work. So we'll look forward to seeing you back before us on the 14th.
As will I. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Very good. Okay, so with that, I believe we, we are at the end of our, of our very short ZBA meeting, having concluded our public hearings, we'll go into the business meeting. We have the minutes of the meeting of August 10th, 2021, submitted by Gretchen Joy. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or any comments, revisions or proposed changes?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Delisle. I have a couple of changes.
All right, feel free.
On page four of seven, the last full paragraph, it begins, Mr. Delisle asked about, and it says, coverage porch, it should be covered porch. And then in the next paragraph, it said, Mr. Delisle asked about the material, architect Bill Soup. And I think his name was Bill Soukoff or something to that effect. So that needs to be fixed. And those are my only changes to the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions or changes? Seeing no hands from the ZBA, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Delisle's changes?
I, I move for you approve the minutes with Mr. Delisle's changes. This is Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Moore on the approval of the minutes with Mr. Delisle's changes. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it. The motion carries and the minutes of 8:10, 21 are approved. Moving on then to the end of our hearing, other updates from the chair. I don't have any other than, I believe we're working and Andy, I'll ask you to maybe give us any intel on when we can go live or when it's expected, we might, we, we, we might be so blessed as to have the ability to schedule council chambers, as much as I, I find it extremely convenient to do it this way. You know, I would love to also discuss whether we are now pushed back with the Delta variant until further notice and should just plan for this method for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, thanks. Good, the good question. Yeah, so we have been talking, it's a long story, I'll kind of cut to the chase for you. So we've managed to reserve the senior community center for both the planning board and ZBA moving forward. We did run into some issues with being able to guarantee or lock in the council chambers, even though that's where we had met previously before the pandemic. So knowing that that might be an issue, given that we'd be advertising and coming out of the pandemic, we didn't want there to be any confusion for anybody. What we were looking for was a place where we knew we could rely upon the space to always be available on those dates and not be bumped. And so what we have is the senior community center, the two thirds of the first, you know, the big function room downstairs would be ours. The earliest date we could meet would be the 14th of September. So your first meeting in September. We are trying to confirm the technical details, making sure the equipment's working smoothly, primarily because of the the mics haven't been quite as sensitive or as clear as, as folks had hoped, I guess, when they first, first purchased the equipment. Owl camera, so to speak, and the equipment. So we want to make sure that's running smoothly, as much smooth as possible, so there's no kinks. We also think it's necessary to maintain that remote access, you know, not just because of the Delta variant, like you said. And we don't know where things are going to be going in the future, but certainly as a, as a resource to applicants, the board members and the public, it seems we'd be remiss, I think, if we were trying to go back solely to in person. And to the point you just made a second ago, there is a requirement now if we meet in the senior center or public buildings to wear masks. So if you want to meet in person on the 14th, it would be with masks. We are trying to maintain the remote access as part of our advertisements, so that in any event, we can always meet remotely. Shouldn't have any problems, but we've been, we've been shifting our notices to the senior centers, so that we don't have any problems with continuity of notice for public hearings. So the long and short is that the 14th would be the earliest date, pending the next week or so, confirming the equipment is working smoothly and that there shouldn't be any problems with you all hearing each other or hearing the applicants if they're presenting remotely or anything like that. And as of now, we can meet, but it would be with masks, which may impact how well you can hear each other, as well as whether or not you can read each other's lips, if you're looking at video. So at any rate, you know, we, we take your input on that, we'll advise, you know, with, with confirmation of the 14th or the applicable date, that we can do it seamlessly. And I would note, by the way, because of some, some events that have been scheduled at senior center, there will be a couple of dates, which I will clearly, I'll land an email to all board members, there are a couple of dates where we would have to do solely exclusive remotely in order to not bump large functions that have been scheduled in the senior center some months ago. So in order not to ruffle feathers, we're, we're sort of trying not to alter those events.
Okay, thank you, Andy. And so, you know, let me put it out to, to my fellow board members. My inclination is that I have zero interest in conducting these meetings in person if we have to wear masks for a whole host of complicating reasons, not to mention, you know, sort of the self-serving ones, but the complications in terms of broadcasting your voice and communication and just comfort. Does anyone disagree with that?
I agree wholeheartedly.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, here's Ken Swanton. I mean, I, I preferred meeting in person. I thought it was great in the city council chambers. I do agree with you that masks are really not good. I, I guess what I'm wondering as in, as a compromise, could we at least turn our cameras on like some of our board, other boards do in town, so we can at least see each other and see, and see Lisa Mead and everybody else?
Yeah, I'm sure we can. Let, let's do this. Let, let's, well, let me, let me continue to go. Does anyone else wish to add anything? And certainly I didn't want to cut you off if you wanted to add anything further.
This is Greg Bennet. I, I tend to follow the same line as Ken has articulated here, but I understand the problem with masks. I'm disappointed that we're back there again, but that's the reality of where we are.
Yeah, I think the camera is, I think camera is a fine idea in, in, if we're not going to, if we're not going to meet in person and we're going to do this remotely because of the mask, and I agree, I don't want to be in person if we're wearing masks, but if it means working with the camera, that's not a problem. I mean, we, we choose not to work with the camera when we log in, so.
Yeah, all right. I, I did want to, was there anyone else who wanted to comment before I?
Mr. Delisle feels?
No, I, I agree with, with what you fellows are saying, that certainly masks are not the, the best way to be in person and, you know, that it would be preferable to remain on Zoom if that were the case. So I, I'm in agreement with everyone.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Delisle. All right, so I, I think that we are in consensus and, you know, I, I believe him. I believe this is fair to say that we, we all are like-minded in the sense that we, you know, we prefer to be in person. I know I do, and I believe you all agree with me in that, and that we're all like-minded in that if we're in person with masks, we prefer to be on Zoom, but if we have to be on Zoom because we can't be in person with masks, perhaps we open up our cameras. So, so why don't we, I, let's try to come to some more refined consensus, let's say by the 14th, you know, and see if we can't nail down a new, you know, a new standard operating procedure in September. But I wanted to raise it now and start the dialogue now and kind of get a feel for, you know, maybe by mid September, we'll have a better sense of where the world's going. Maybe we won't. But either way, I think we're all inclined to want to get back in person, get back to the council chambers. I would like us to not be, you know, forever banished to the senior center, though that's fine if that's where it needs to be, but I think, you know, all the boards and commissions, you know, worked in harmony with scheduling for the most part with some complications. But if that's not the cards, it's not the cards, you know, but we'll, I think we're all on the same page. I just wanted to kind of out the conversation so we can start talking about it. For now, we'll stay, I think we'll all just stay remote, certainly for the next meeting, so that we, we don't have to do it with masks. And maybe by the end of the meeting, let's discuss whether we want to formally just shift it all to, to on camera, because I think we should let the public know as well. And let's just plan on doing the 14th as normal and decide during our business meeting on the 14th, whether we want to change the Zoom format to a video format and allow the public to be aware as well. And does anyone disagree with that or anyone have any further comments or is that, are we, am I fair to say we're all sort of on the same page on that?
I think so.
Okay, this is Andy. I would just offer that as far as the Zoom settings, I just checked, is we have the cameras enabled for board members if you so wish. So it wouldn't require any setting changes, if you, if you will. To my knowledge, I think certainly the planning board members are showing up on their cameras. I don't know to the extent every board is, but, but it's, it's available to you as a setting anyway.
Historic does, and when, and when I log in, you get the option to join with or without video, and I just choose without because I'm in my pajamas, but.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I know conservation does, I know planning does and
Historic does.
And Historic does. So, so let's, let's, let's plan on, you know, making a, making a game day decision on the 14th and we'll figure out, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll make a decision at the end of our meeting on the 14th as to, you know, formally changing up our, our Zoom format. And with everyone's sort of, you know, permission, I'll, you know, we'll plan on doing this the same way the 14th and then go to a camera version if everyone is in agreement, but we'll just, we'll, we'll deal with it on the 14th, I think. Let's just also see what the world, you know, what's happening in the world, you know, maybe, I don't know. Hopefully things start to loosen up with, you know, with full approval of a vaccine. But I doubt it's going to be different come 14th, but we'll, we'll, we'll just look optimistically. All right, anything else before we, we make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, this is Ken again. I just wanted to chime in on your statement there, Rob, that I think the city council chambers were a great place for us to meet before all this COVID stuff happened. I happened to ask Jared, you know, hey, how come you guys, you know, want to use it now on our night for subcommittee meetings? So that was just, he used the word nonsense. He said it's, it's, it was more to do with the getting the stuff ready, getting the stuff right for Zoom and might work better at the senior center. So anyway, I just, I too would like to at some point, I think, an interim step, as you pointed out, is having our masks, having our cameras on. At some point, I agree with you, it'd be nice to be back in the city council chambers face to face. Hopefully someday this COVID will pass and we'll be back there.
Yeah.
I just want to share that. Thank you.
No, no, I, I completely agree. And I'll, I'll go one step further, Greg. You know, I think that, I think that, you know, what our, our work is, is, you know, is worthy of taking place in, in city hall. I think that's the appropriate venue, unless it's, you know, unless there's some prevailing obstacle to prevent it. I think, you know, the senior center is not a bad venue, but I mean, you, you know, at the end of the day, like, I just don't, I, I think we, I'd like to try to keep us there as well, you know, if, if it's in the cards. So, so let's, let's all work toward that common goal and we'll, we'll feel it out on the 14th and we'll, let's, let's make a change on the 14th so that we can, you know, try to start moving ourselves toward improving, you know, improving the way we do business.
Yeah, thank you. This is Andy. I would also advise if any members want factual information as to what's been discussed about meeting venues and setups, to please discuss that with me, rather than taking information third party that may not be accurate. Thank you.
Okay, that, that's, that's fair enough, Andy, and thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move Ken Swanton.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
And motions made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone, and thank you, thank you, Caitlin, and thank you, Gretchen, and of course, thank you, Andy.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, all. File this one away.
All right, bye bye.
Good night.